People are telling me nobody is...
Which, the bottom two, Mary Kay and maybe?
I believe the bottom two were part of that.
Well, now wait a minute. Dennis, what's? Dennis, the well-born 28,000, that is for those extra tubes that we put in on I Road. But the 16 for Husker Steel would be for the bridges and the beams for the bridges. So my question then would be, Mary Kay, could we switch this 28 back to Neimah County Highway Department? Because that's where they've already took that money from. And let them then turn to Bill. But they'll need to send them a bill, and there's going to be a couple of others. I suppose you're going to try to group them up first.
I need to get them all in. I did talk to a guy this morning. I'm supposed to have a bill on here.
Right. But what I'm saying is, when you send them a bill, you'd like to have that all grouped together.
I'd like to get by yourself.
So they're all together, there's no separate... So you've got your own bill that is fixing P-44.
Yes.
Plus then the labor on I Road and II Tube. You need to get that. Otherwise, everything's in.
I haven't figured that one of the people...
That's why I don't, I don't.
...have got to do that. The ones on I Road, I've got to see where I'm at on that one.
Yes. But what I'm saying is, we can take this, which 28,000 was that four tubes?
Yes.
Okay. Turn it back to the Neimah County Highway Department.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Then in turn, he can bill for Kathy.
Bill what?
The total bill for those three projects that were separate. That's right. The three bridges and there's three tubes kind of, or three whatever.
Didn't you pay across 7,000 something for construction?
Yeah, we did.
We already got that money, right?
That's another one. I know, but see, that's another one that ought to go back in.
Just mark on there the ones that we need to, um...
How does that work though? That needs to come out of Route 3.
Yeah, that's what I planned.
Okay, okay. So, let me... Well, no, but she can go ahead and switch that right now.
Right, right.
It's just Mater Trail, right, is what we're trying to get here, is a Mater Trail. Then you can bill that whole sequence and it'll come right back to you as on your account.
That's the way, best way to do it, the way you got a trail for years.
And then all four entities that they're billing goes right straight?
We got to check for that already.
No.
And so we did pay, ran it through, so we will do a transfer.
This here is all separate because we didn't know what they were going to be.
Oh, this is not that 180 pot that?
No.
This is different.
That was for three bridges.
Oh, okay.
This is for those patching that one little bridge. And then put two tubes in each one.
So the only one that should have came out.
And we didn't know what we were going to cost to do all that, so they said, "Well, this service is billed."
I'm sorry, I'm mad.
Now it's done.
And Mark didn't say that and check that we sent back because it wasn't cashed in.
Okay, so we're going to make those hit your account. And then you bill the wind farm, and then when you get that money, that'll remit both your accounts.
We've got a clock on that.
Like I said, I'm sorry, and I just didn't realize there were other things that you were going to provide.
But that's fine, you know, we're in good shape. He called when he knows any issues, probably about all the issues.
But we didn't, yeah, he told me. We just have to build. In the end, once you figure it out and get it done, then they bill that separately. Okay, so that's, take care. Okay.
Do we get any labor on that or just material?
Because, well, I put the gravel complex like everything on. Or Stato. Are somebody else?
I was going to show you another one that we had. I don't know if you want to do with this one, but I think Kathy got the same call and I checked too. Yeah, we have a road right-of-way thing that, um, there isn't. So we're in Illinois Township in Section 6 on 96th Road, which would be this road here. And see, there's no, there's nothing there. And even if you go, Mitchell's the township that sits right above it, and this is Mitchell. So you'd be looking right here, there's nothing there either. So there is a road there, but there's, our records don't show...
A right-of-way?
Well, I mean, it don't even show a road being there, just like this, it's just like the situation.
I see.
We can, we can try to look that up, but I have a feeling that's only going to be pertaining to this section only. That's the way it's written in there. What does that say?
48.
But that says five foot, or what does that say?
Number five, page 41.
Starting, starting where, Mary Kay? Where's that actually starting? From 187?
Section 1.
He just, he was just wondering what the road right-of-way was on 96th Road in Section 6.
So that means it's starting on 187 going?
So he's just talking about that one mile.
Okay, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. What's the... Can't they start with one there?
Yeah.
That's six.
That's in the middle.
Section 6.
See, that's a half mile, that's a half mile right there.
What page was that, Dennis? Book 5, page 1?
Page 5, or book, page 41. Otherwise, page 4. Book 4, page 110.
So, it's showing nothing until you get clear over to 3, Section 3?
That's how, do that where?
Maybe 4, or was that later?
Uh, page 41's only showing about a three-quarter mile stretch.
But that's a half mile, right?
Nope.
Shouldn't this be the section on, you know?
Oh, yeah, I think you're right, because this is all, this is all Section 14 down here. Should be over here somewhere.
Here, because it's Illinois.
Maybe I didn't look that up right. Section 45, page 41.
Yep.
But, that translates over here.
Yeah, yeah. Starts here, but it's this whole, that's all one thing.
What does it say?
It's probably just going to say, "Section 14 Township 2 Range 12." So it's not even, they're not even in the right, and it's messed up.
It's four, 12.
And there's a three-quarter mile road that goes down south on that, this south.
But they're just wanting to know right there.
Yeah, they're just wanting to know, I assume I would have assumed this one was mile.
What we'd have to do is go back into the township, that's what they want for a right-of-way on their first one there, right?
I guess so. Now, I talked to Brad about it, he said something about, I did call him about it too, and he said that if we couldn't, sometimes they just go back to the generally accepted, which is 40 feet.
Yeah, but if you're going to open one though, then?
Yeah, yeah.
That's a different.
Right, that's different.
Most of them go 50 now, just because, well, the new way, say, all the new equipment what have you, 40 foot's not a very big right-of-way. They'd hit them on the 40.
Anyway.
That would kind of be up to the township.
I don't know what you tell people when you...
Well, you can't find it, you can't find it.
Yeah, you can't, I mean, I don't know where to go at all.
Uh-huh. We'll talk to Brad and then about that.
One of those splits in trade.
It would be over here, see, could be over here.
Shouldn't be, is it up here?
Well, just parts of it.
Of six?
Not yet, just parts of it.
Don't go in there, Dennis.
Could be over here, home, a bigger portion.
Oh, it's in home, okay.
See, there's not very much of it there.
But this, this section here is what they're wearing?
Yes. That's their turning radius, see where they turn and go left off of 187. Okay, we'll look into that. So...
I did, I did.
Still do?
Says, "Undisconnected."
Oh, was he talking about the home line or are you talking about Shane?
What about Shane, did you try and get him? He'll see that you called, though, I'm sure. Did you hear anything on the revitalization plan yet, Mary Kay?
Um, the only thing I know is that Nancy wants to meet with Betty O'Neil. Um, what we're going over, we're likely going to think that's scheduled this week for her.
Well, I would stress that we need to get that.
Oh, you'll be here for the day a little, probably?
That's all I know.
I would stress that we need to get that finished, because you get a chance to get Nancy in there and...
If I talk to her, I'll let her know that you'd like to hurry this along.
Probably. They'll be finalizing stuff with you guys.
Thanks, yeah.
She's working on it, it sounds like, and so maybe, all she needs to do is baddy for like that.
What about that, Cheryl?
Let's see, Mary Kay, did, uh... Them checks from next there, did you put them in the regular checking account? Or did you open up a new checking account?
No, it's still in our same checking account, just in a different...
Are we getting any interest or anything on any of that?
Uh, should be, yeah. I want to know details, probably get her asked about that, of course, on my phone. But yeah, it should be. To get something off that.
Hello?
Good morning, this is Shane.
Hey Shane, Tim, it's Commissioner Dennis, Gary and Dennis, and Mary Kay, and Heidi from the radio station.
Okay.
What, what have we got for going on today?
Well, actually, there's quite a bit. There's more rock trucks running today than I've seen, I think. So they've got a whole bunch all up, um, here in the northwest corner. Basically, anything from Corning and west and north.
I see.
And concrete trucks are now running that lately. They had some other stuff south this morning, but everything else, I think, for the rest of the day is up north there.
Okay, gotcha. Gotcha.
I've been trying to figure out a plan for the whole week on basically where they would be running, but the one man that I've got for information, state gatherer on that, is on vacation till today.
Okay.
I'll call back from him, but yeah, other than that, it's just a complete guess, not even an educated guess.
I got you. Got it. You guys got anything, Shane?
No, I don't, I'm, I'm fine.
I know they fixed that one spot we had an issue with last week on the road. We get some issues, they fix them.
Dust is going to start to be an issue here, or I say starts to be, but more so, if we, you know, no rain.
Yeah, they've got two trucks running today. It looks like probably a third one that I think was headed that direction. So I think he's probably going over to fill it with water, so, um, they're just trying to concentrate mostly where the areas where they're running.
Right. Okay.
They've been pretty good, you know, about, you know, when it rains, you know, they don't have anything out of course, but once it starts drying out, they've been doing a fairly good job of getting stuff out and air keeping stuff water, particularly some houses.
Should have a pretty good week this week, I think.
Yep, yep, um, it looks like they have the very little rain forecast for here, so my guess is it's a strong week.
So there's been, there's a couple blades up there in Sabatha, up there on east of Sabatha, and a couple, uh, generators on trucks and some... You probably don't know anything about that.
Um, I know that they had some come in yesterday, they've got more that's already been coming through this, this morning already, and they've got more scheduled for today. But my guess is that stuff that's up there is coming in, like, right now.
I talked to several of those guys in Sabatha, they were walking down Main Street. They were staying there. They were ones that brought that, of course, flagged guys, and there were, there were eight or 10 of them walking down Main Street. Oh, we love it, Sabatha.
Okay, well, we'll talk to you again next week, Shane.
Okay, don't forget anything.
Thank you.
Take care.
Take care. How many people does Cook Flat have on the program? Do you know, Tim?
Um, they have several, I think there are two. Try to use two. They were using like four.
Yeah, I was going to say they cut it down some.
I don't know if they call and need some stuff looked at, you know, certain, sometimes Gene has to come up and look at a culvert or a bridge or something they're wanting to deal with. And grade it out, you know, so they decide what they want to do. That's kind of over and above the other one.
Well, if they get the, a lot of the rock haul before the, and we didn't get much rain over the weekend, so...
Comprehensive planning discussion starts now.
Okay. Well, I haven't had any updates from any of the people we've contacted. We have many citizens that are interested in pursuing it, getting things on the road as soon as we can. What road do we take? That's not, we're going to have to talk about. So I don't know how, have you talked to anybody, Gary, about what their timing would be now, if we...
No, I have not.
If we was to find somebody that we were satisfied with and go forward, I would bet that we're 60 days out. I don't know, but...
But that's how long it would take us to put together a plan?
Well, it'll take longer, but you're talking about...
Because don't they have to get public input?
Sure. Well, yeah, but I mean, just to, just to put us on their...
Uh, just to get started with the...
Get started on their list.
Yeah, well...
Because I doubt that they're just sitting there waiting to jump right on it and go.
Right, right, they're probably, that other...
I don't know. I mean, that's not, we could probably, and that'd be our first, uh...
Here is, we gotta figure out who we're going to use. We're all number one. What firm are you going to pick to lead them? Because they will lead it.
I'm looking at my notes, one was, uh, 18 to 24 months to complete. And there's another one that says it's called a six-month process.
So long ago it's been.
I personally was quite impressed with the one out of Texas that did Junction City and Manhattan. Potawatomi County. The gentleman up here in Nebraska is out there, would be probably my second choice.
Those, he's more of it.
More of it, yeah. I suppose what we ought to do is have a, try and schedule them with a phone conference next week or a couple weeks, whenever they can work again.
And talk to them again.
And find out, you know, if they're still interested, what their timeline is. The biggest problem is, is I don't think any of them, you know, unless we can come up with some specifics of what we really want, of what it's going to cost.
You've got to get that first.
You know, because, you know, how detailed would we want it, you know, I, and when I read that one where you go out for this, I don't know, that's, uh, pretty... I don't know whether you can just ask them for what they thought it'd cost for an average comprehensive plan for our county.
They're not going to give you a window, they're not going to set you, you know...
Sure.
But that will at least give you an idea, huh?
Would it be $20,000, would it be $80,000? I don't know.
Well, I, that's what I want to do, I want to talk to them again. Yeah, I would like to talk to all three of them.
I was, I was, uh, you know, I know, like, what Hornburg and Corning and the city of Seneca and all them have, have this Mr. Marvin. But did they even look at anyone? How did they determine that this hired him with, with the bid process? You know, or did money enter into it at all? Was that an issue? I don't know. Haven't talked to anybody that seemed to, seemed willing to give any input on that part.
Well, like I said, I'd like to talk to them again, it's been a long time.
Yeah, we need to talk to them, and maybe we ought to try and get them, you want all three, you want that up against the wall?
I, I did find what you have saying also, so we need to weigh that all out. See which one we want to go with. Then we're going to have to get a, a, or put together, you know, a committee to work with him. Or whoever, so I have...
Or do you think we need to get a committee to help decide who to get? Or should we just decide that on our own and then have them help with the committee or expand the word? Change the committee once they're on the board? We could get a search committee, you know, to help us decide what company we should do, but we're going to have to give them limits of, of what our budget is, you know, and what is our budget. To me, it's, it's us to decide who we pick. How much of a budget can we? And how much it's going to cost, and then we turn it over to them, and then they, uh, you know, what do they want? A 10-member committee, or 12, or 6, or whatever they recommend, whatever they, you know, that'd be up to them. Well, our, our, uh... Okay. If we, if it would be, let's say, $100,000, that's going to be hard on any of our budgets.
It is.
And where would we pull that money from? Or even if we go next year, where we could allot that much more money, can we come up with that much more money with the limitations the state has put on? I think that's going to be pretty difficult, don't you, Tim?
Well, in the end, that, there's a lot of things going to be different next year. Is sales tax all coming in like it's supposed to, is everything coming in, our, everything may change in this big budget year.
Yeah, that's what I said.
There may not be cuts made, let alone now we want to add to that, well, we're going to have, you know...
And we're already short fall this year. You know, some of our budgets are really going to be pretty thin, the way I have looked at it. And, uh, you know, we've kept, we had to cut pretty seriously last year, roads and bridge and, and there's...
Well, we did a lot of cutting last year, but I guarantee that in future years, it's going to be a little bit serious.
And we've got, well, we've got six months and 20 left, as of today. Sales tax revenue, we don't know how much that's going to be down, but it's going to be down. But it's not, that's not just, it ain't been that bad compared to, you know, what I could...
Just don't know.
You know, compared to...
No, but if you lost 50 to 100,000 dollars on that, though, I mean...
Over the next six months, that'd be...
It's impossible.
That'd be pretty serious, and especially if you're going to spend $100,000 and all of a sudden you're...
That's right. Dennis, it's people buying new vehicles, you know, because that all comes back and around about what it do, you know? If you're not, well, then, that's part of your sales tax.
Well, and we've never really got any from our auditor, you know, how and what we can do with any other money that we get, you know, uh, you know, so... But I would say we move forward, I, I would recommend that we get ahold of the three companies, and of course, if anybody else that's listening today has got some ideas or, or someone that they think we need to be talking to, they need to get ahold of one of us, and we'll try and contact them and, and set up a phone call.
At the very least, the three we did.
But at least we'll do the three we got, and go with that.
Are you, want you to reach out to those three and see if I can get them together?
If you can, if you can't, well, you know, I can sure help you.
And then, by going back to the minutes, and if I don't add a card on them, I think I can probably find, like, contact them near that.
Well, I've got, I've got five of them. I've got Victor Burks from Bartlett West. And he changed us over to somebody else. He said they don't do it. Oh. I, he's an urban planner, did Seneca zoning. Does that name ring a bell to you, that Victor Burks?
Uh, no.
Yeah. Then I have the Kendy Keast.
That was the name of the company.
Yeah, Gary Mitchell is his name. He's based in Houston. He did, he did the Bot County Plan, yeah, took 18 months. Then I have Keith Marvin. He's the one that's done some stuff in Neimah County, is that not correct? Did he help Corning? And I think he helped Burr.
And Seneca.
And Seneca. Then I have Gary Stee. So is he the Wobunsey County guy?
He was the one that was...
Remembering a little of these guys?
No.
Yeah, he came just for the, their...
Well, what he was, he...
He, he was their actual facilitator of the, you know, the plan.
Then I have David Bryner.
I don't remember.
Now, wait a minute, I have him as 20 years zoning, I have Wobunsey County.
He's the guy that, I was thinking about the other one.
Do you have on your notes when, when we talk to them?
Yes, uh, either, well, okay, uh, 3/20, 3/9 of 20, March 9th of 20, two of them on March 9th. And there might be something in there for Keith Marvin, because I don't have that specific date for him.
See anything in there from Keith Marv, do you, well, you see those two, Victor Burks, Bartlett West? Kendy Keest, well, Gary Mitchell.
Yeah, we've got the Victor Burks, we've got Gary Mitchell and Keith Marvin.
You have all three, so they were on that day, okay. Then I've got one from nine thirty, September thirtieth.
Of nineteen?
Of nineteen, yes. I started there, yeah.
Okay, and that was that Gary.
He was just that Gary Steed though, but he's not...
Is he the one that spoke down there at the courtroom that day?
Right.
Okay.
Then David Briner, or whatever.
He was, he was tense seven, so he was, uh, October seventh.
Right, but he's the one that spoke about how Wabunsee handled, he was their director or whatever, of implementing all the zoning rules.
But hadn't we found out that the...
They won't do that.
That Flint Hills, yeah, they won't, they just don't have to.
Well, let's see, which one, somebody was retiring, was that, was that the Steeds, Gary Steed?
Yeah. And then the new person we contacted didn't, didn't have time to do it.
That's right.
So with that group, the Flint Hills, whatever they're called, Rye.
I think, I'll see if I had a card on these people, a business card, if I didn't, I think I'd find contact information on the internet.
See, Steeds, they, they're the ones that recommended, they said they could no longer do it, that Jana, whatever her name was.
Right.
And she said they couldn't do it, and to get ahold of this outfit out of Sweetwater, Texas, or... And that's who Autobots County had.
She referred, asked of them. I guess wanna try to relay Mr. Chairman to, I believe she did, wanna try to plan that for eleven o'clockish?
I think so.
Yeah, it's probably...
And that may not happen as far as, uh, Rye.
See what their time is.
Maybe in the afternoon, who knows, I mean, how long?
See what their time schedule is, if one of them has to go at nine thirty, well...
Yeah, I think we could, we're...
I think you could.
Good, now, we're gonna try to target eleven, Matt, but it may not always happen, put it that way. Is that correct?
Well, as far as being, being able to talk.
Yes, yes.
We will probably set that up, talk about it on a weekly basis at eleven o'clock till we go forward.
I think that'd be fair.
Yeah. Depending on their schedule, though, they, you know...
Do you guys anticipate regular discussions about planning? Do you anticipate having regular discussions about county planning? Is that something that's...
Comprehensive.
That's kind of... Yeah, I think at eleven o'clock, we'll shoot for every week. It'll be on engine, but whatever we got, you know, two of them have in front of us, per se. I just wanna get those guys either on the phone or back in, or one of the others, so I can talk to them again.
However, in, in, you know, in response to your question, I mean, I think whoever, whomever we may get, it's up to them to produce this.
Well, yeah, but temporarily, anyway, we're gonna set it up for every, and even then...
Right.
We still may have conversations on what's going on every week at eleven o'clock, per se, okay, how, what are we into now, or what are we, what can we do in the next week or two? That person can give us some input on.
Yeah. I guess my idea is that this, this individual and their...
Committee.
Committee, in, in six, eight months, I think we'll have very little in between, very little to do with it. They'll submit us a plan, drop it on this desk, and, and then we'll discuss what we, I don't know, I guess... Yeah. Whether they'll be in every, you know, every week or two, or whether we won't hear anything for six months, and they bring it in, and here it is, here's what we recommend.
Do you have an idea of what you're, what you're looking for, why you, why you want the plan, and what you wanna see in it?
I thought it just may be understanding the wishes of the county, of the people, of the residents of the county. I'm, I'm hoping that's what it'll bring out. What are the, what are the serious issues of Niemaha County? That we commissioners and that need to be addressed, that need to be addressed. And zoning would be one of them issues.
And, well, you got any more, anything else to the...
Um, no, no, I don't. I'm, I'm just trying to, to keep track of what's going on with the planning discussion.
Well, we're just starting at the beginning.
Uh, yeah. The process, to me, is the comprehensive plan that would lead to zoning that would be voted on. No?
I mean, yeah, you can, to get direction.
Get correction.
Countywide zoning?
Yeah.
That would be voted on?
Okay. You can ask Brad, I think Brad said you can, and for him, you know, and that would lead you that to what, what Niemaha County, it'd be a question, but it doesn't necessarily a binding question, I would think.
We'll ask him.
I have a very good reason I... Well, that was my idea of the process, I think, but we're in Sibetha, they're, they're bound to adopt that, the three-mile extra territory. And that, the way it sounds to me, is that, that that will be their zoning laws can be implemented by the city commission, and that might happen this week, the way I understand it, 'cause I've had a couple calls, that it would not be voted on by people in that.
Well, they won't.
Well, I'm, I, I...
I don't think extending their powers with their reach. You get them, put three miles there, and you put three miles around Seneca, and there's not a lot left of them.
Right. I just thought that zoning was a, was an issue that, that would be voted on by the entire county. But I don't know, well, that we'll find out maybe in a few minutes.
Did you get this, uh, letter from Betty, Tim? Taxes on the transmission lines. Did you get that, Shona? In your package? She make you a copy?
No, I didn't see that.
I got it, and, yeah, I'm sorry, she probably ought, she probably ought to give you this, but it's from David Harper, evaluating the equipment used in generating wind resources.
So the question was, was those, do those, are those overhead power lines taxed, is that correct?
Yeah. And they're considered a part of the generation of electricity property, and exempt along with other renewable energy producing property. That said, in year eleven, when the property becomes taxable, if they don't have a lifetime exemption, the county would value the property as CIME. So the retail cost would be, when the new, would be a key part in the valuing of the property. So...
So those, those...
That just comes from Roger Hamm of the Kansas Department.
Yeah. So those, any underground and/or above grounds coming from Soldier Creek would be tax exempt till they get to the, to the, to the wire in Leavenworth County.
Underground would even be associated with that. The underground ones to the substation are?
Well, it does, the collection lines from each tower to the substation is considered part of the generation property, along with other renewable energy producing property.
To the substation, but then from the substation on, and that, that overhead thing, is that not correct?
Yeah.
That is part of it, yeah, I'm wondering about the power that heads for Leavenworth now, and all that overhead lines, so... That doesn't say anything in there about it? If you're jumping across county lines to get to where you need to go.
But the way she wrote it, says commissioners want to know if the power lines overhead that run from towers to substations, where there's no overhead line, they're all buried, which they would be included in.
What are you doing here for Brown?
That, uh... But back in two thousand fifteen, the House made several changes to that bill.
Well, it's not like the oil line that goes across here, you know, it's taxed, because it's less than two hundred miles.
Right, and taxed from the get-go, no question about that. Maybe that, maybe those overhead lines from the substation, Soldier Creek...
Elevenworth.
To Leavenworth, maybe that, that exemption is yet to be determined.
Well, it, it all depends on, the way I understand it, it all depends on whether or not they get the lifetime exemption.
Right, which is yet to be determined.
And I don't know whether you, probably can't get an answer on that.
That all comes from the Board of Tax Abiles that probably hasn't made the determination yet. Shane know anything about that, but he, but he would know.
I doubt it. Now, they're going to color exactly how to do it after the ten years, but the problem is, is...
It's, like I said, that's a moot point if they've been given a lifetime exemption, doesn't matter.
To me, the collection lines, I understand that, from the tower to the substation, yes, that's part of the project. Now, what amount of power lines will it leave?
And what did you say about this clean line that goes across?
Those.
Clean line further.
Right across here, they've got the power to...
Yes.
They don't get taxed? Will they get taxed?
Yes.
Uh, I doubt it, they'll have a ten-year exemption, I probably, because it's more than two hundred miles.
Well, it's either a question I had...
That two hundred mile thing kicks in.
Do the, the one that they just ran to City Sibetha, that ten miles, is that taxed?
I would say absolutely.
I wonder, I guess we can call Betty and find out on that.
Are you showing them along Debbie, Red?
Right, well, from Debbie and then back to the east, and then north into Sibetha, that's all part of West Star, I bet that is taxed.
I think the only reason I would know of that is because the last time we did, working with the abstract, we had to add taxing units into what Niemaha Marshall Electric or West Star, or somebody had, and they were picking up that, that, because they, prior to that, they had property in some of those taxing units.
All right. Okay, and we had an issue with the road, Mary Kay, did we need to bring that up with Brad?
No, you can't, if you want to.
Coming up on eighty-seven, Ninety-sixth and G Road.
Is that the issue you talked to him about?
Yes.
Where there is now...
Does that, that's township road, so the township would be the one that needs to put a...
Right away.
Right away in there, you know, if we work with them.
And, and I know that we, you thought that the road we were talking about, is we didn't find the right way. But the road that you're talking about now, is there any indication what right of way was established?
There was never one.
Illinois. Can we, can we just...
Illinois.
Does this show that an actual road was established?
These are not, you see, are they? There's Washington, there's the north side of Illinois, and the south side of...
So we're talking about this mile?
Which would be two miles, yeah. Well, there's actually three miles that's not...
But I mean, he just said his property was in section six, so that would only cover this, this mile.
But that doesn't have anything either.
Right, we don't think there's anything, any road right of way, or any road that's gonna establish.
I like that deal of my grandmother's going by there, that we had three miles there, didn't have a right of way established either.
Well, here's the law on that, um, the first thing you do is you look at, you try to find out from the documents where the road was created, what the right of way was.
And we can't find it.
If you, if you can't find from that, if you can figure out when that road was established, then you look to see what the minimum road right of way was by statute at that time. Then, if you can't pinpoint when the road was established, uh, the fallback number is forty feet.
And see, here it's fifty feet, right next to it.
Yeah.
You get over here, it's forty foot again. You see here, it's forty foot down here, fifty foot down here.
If, uh, if you can't establish, if you can't establish when that road was, was established, then it's forty feet.
Or... What if the township wants fifty feet?
Then they can open the road down and make it fifty feet if they want.
I mean, in today's world, forty feet is just not very bad.
Yeah.
And once, when we established that, they went to, they wanted to go fifty foot.
Yeah.
But, so they wouldn't fall back to the township, though?
Yeah, if they, if they would formally open the road, the township could do so now, and make it fifty feet if they want.
And then again, if they're neighboring to other townships, they would have to have those...
Yeah, see, this would be, what, what's on the center?
Township line.
Is it center?
No, Mitchell.
You sure? Uh, here's the... North side of Illinois? Yeah, it has Mitchell, you're right. So here's Mitchell, right here.
That means it would be this road, wouldn't it?
Yeah, one, two, three. And see, as you go, there's forty feet clear over here, but it's fifty foot, see on this one, all the way across, fifty foot this way, so everything in the neighborhood looks like it's ours. There's no road here evidently. So, it's a neighboring thing, so you'd need both townships saying, okay, which would be John Colocky and, I don't know who else on Mitchell, but I do know the three of them.
They need to establish a road and set forty feet right away there, and without that, the law says it's gonna be forty feet.
And I'm not ready to just drop back and say forty feet, I'm gonna let them make that call.
That's, that's really not anything for the commissioners, dude, that's just what the law is.
I see.
Okay, but in your situation, Tim, where your road wasn't, the road was there...
Yes.
And this is the same thing as here, the road is there.
Can't find any evidence, though, when it was...
When it was, and I don't know if we went into where it was, on further down the line.
What else could we do, though, Mary Kay? How far back, or what could we do, anything that we've done to give us any more information on that?
I mean, the only other thing you could do is go through, go through all those road records.
I guess we got a little bit, so, uh...
Yeah, if you want to. And see, if there's anything that addresses that, it just didn't get recorded in that index, for some reason.
Well, there is a physical road there.
Oh, yeah.
Currently, okay.
It was dirt.
Right, a dirt road, yeah. I didn't think it was even anything, but now it's dry.
It just didn't have any right of way ever escaped now.
We put a new bridge on that road over there that we opened that time. We had real water running along the side of a real power line, and then this new power line was coming in from the north to feed real water. Their engineers said, well, we need to know where the right of way is, so we know where to put our poles. Nobody could find nothing of it. How did we go that long without somebody else questioning where they would put their stuff? And so, anyway, there's three more miles there that we had to open.
Are fans on either side of this road, you know? Is it fans on either side, both sides?
Not necessarily.
I mean, of course, miles not, but there I don't know.
Well, that might, that'd be back to the township, or those, if there's fans, they might say, well, I don't wanna, uh, we wanna...
You can still make it fifty foot, but whatever his grandfather did, I see, that's how we did it. That's how we did that three mile stretch that time we opened it. That's how we did that three-mile stretch that time we opened it. Whatever's there now, you can't force them to back it up. But anything new, now, then you need to get on the right-of-way. Which ours is all pretty wide open anyway on that three-mile stretch, because I put my new fence in and ran it, and we backed up anyway because it's just, the equipment is just 40 foot, you put a fence at 40 foot.
Oh, yeah.
You're really narrowing things up then.
And it makes you pretty...
Nice, 50 foot is a...
Well, you take 20 feet all over the ditches.
Yeah, well, yeah.
That's not much, 20 feet.
20 feet on each side, that's not much?
No. So, I mean, it was disputed, right, Mary Kay, so what do we do here? I mean, get all the township officials?
It just was brought, somebody was just checking to see what the road right-of-way was in that particular area, and that's how I realized that I don't know what it is.
And I think the way the England is absent any sort of evidence to the contrary, the law says it's 40 feet.
Yeah.
But the townships do that.
And you could, you could go to the townships in this state. Listen, you know, this is where it is, and if you're okay with the 40 feet and don't want to go to 50, you know, we can put a note in there that it is 40 feet and put it 50 right. Wouldn't have to go through the...
Yes, but if the township wanted to make it 50, why?
Yeah, they could, they'd have to post it.
They just have to go through the statutory network.
Open the road. Actually, we don't have a road right now, I mean, according to the book. So can they, for sign up? Can't enter the road?
No.
That's where all the wind turbines are coming in on is that road.
They can, probably, believe, but that's, why is it, is that part of the...
That's where all the turbines are coming into the northern part of the state. Blades, you name it.
And that was part of the plan that was agreed to with next year?
And nobody ever looked to see, I guess, what kind of right-of-way was on that road?
Yeah.
So, I guess, um... Well, in the meantime... It's a township issue.
It really isn't this one, yeah. There's really nothing you could do unless you want to open up your roads a carryway. We could not make the exemption, but it's really a township issue.
I will call John, because I got his number, and I will call one of the guys on the Illinois township, let them know and they can talk to each other. And then let that know what's going, they're going to have to have a meeting, each one of them, to talk about this.
That's who's on the Illinois board, right there.
Okay, anything else for me before I head down to draft it?
It was my idea of a, that a comprehensive plan would be drawn out and will approve by commissioners from a yet-to-be-determined administrator that would lead to zoning regulations that are voted on by the people of Neimaw County. That incorrect?
Who? I'd have to use your research.
Okay.
Well, I don't know where I got that.
That's just what we brought up, that zoning is one of those issues that can be voted on and determined by the voters, the electors.
Well, let's tell them, Sibetha, do they meet monthly, the city council, and about building laws for their extraterritorial?
I don't know.
A couple called about that, and they were, I don't know anything about it.
I was understanding that they had already increased their extraterritorial jurisdiction and they had already passed
Well, that's what I thought.
regulations to those areas.
Yeah, I don't know if they've done deal.
They passed some specific regulations regarding wind farms. That's, I mean, one mission for me. But I don't know.
And included in that, specific regulations on wind farm.
I believe they added that extraterritorial jurisdiction and they passed a specific zoning regulations that applies to all of Sibetha regarding wind farms. But I don't know that for the...
Right.
Yeah.
Go ahead. It's difficult, and can make it impossible.
Right.
Okay.
Hey Brad, have you heard anything from Nancy about the neighborhood?
I have not, let me reach out to her and see.
Well, I do know that she is planning to meet with Betty and I this week.
Oh, good.
To get some information, but I don't know if you heard anything.
No, that's probably the information she wants to get, to give to me to draft it, so, I'm just waiting for information from her.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
Very, you might read this. About Betty's...
Appraisal thing, yeah.
But read this.
I'm sure something about that.
She was sent to him. And I didn't think that's very professional.
He's hardly asking questions. I'm sure he didn't ask.
Oh, you don't want a job? We can change that.
Yeah.
Our job would be great, if nobody ever asked any questions.
Yeah. The collection lines from each tower to the substation.
That's pretty...
For the generation and exempt along with the other renewable property producing. That said, on year 11, when the property becomes taxable, the county would value the property as CI, which is the retail cost for new, would be a key part of that own property. Now, that's all the material, because...
Let's go down back to the last page, see, now that there is that 2015. And read that, and then see how that, how do you read that to jive in with what you just read? Did they get in and file?
Um, yeah, we had a couple. Who did she say?
Dylan Kine.
By, by a fee.
By fees, and Greg Allen.
By a fee as well.
And then one more, Ian said, checking the petition.
Yeah. On which one?
Dylan.
I think, I thought he was, I thought Greg Allen maybe was different.
So if he's on the list, he'd be a, he'd be a primer.
I don't think he would.
I'd have that mixed up.
Yeah, that's all right. Let's read that.
Well, the obvious is that, oh, I just, uh... Goes from a lifetime exemption to a 10-year, so that is, no doubt.
Is that what you read that as?
15, December 4th of 15.
That's where I can feel.
See, and this didn't take a, that, effective July 1st of 15.
See, and the lifetime thing had to be signed by...
16, right?
Well, was it 12/31 of 50?
I was sure thinking, most of it would be a temporary credit beginning with the 16 tag.
It would be your, within the amount, if we would just...
What was that number again, Dean, so I'm gonna try calling?
Who?
That one.
Call the hotline?
Just, I'm gonna see if I can, I'm gonna call the name back in place.
Well, I think it's, uh...
285?
285-2041.
Welcome to Veritas Wireless, the number you dialed has been changed, disconnected or is no...
Hey Patty, how's it going? Hey, are you having a lot of issues with phone this morning? Okay. Who do we call, do you know? Okay. Well, I don't know, we don't have service, we're just not getting, we're getting, it says the number, we got, you're dialed, has been changed to no longer in service. Okay. Okay, we'll give them a call. Thanks.
Considering they had all figured out and then they changed, because they couldn't get self-service, I don't know where, they changed something, and when they did that, that cut everything off, and they didn't realize that. Now, texting, whatever, they do text and all that stuff, you know, they lost. They lost a lot of their stuff, so they get it back on, so they didn't realize it was running on. So they're getting, trying to get...
Sorry about that one.
So it's something about they changed, because they were having so many issues down in there with not having self-service. So they wanted to text them, they wanted to do something different on their plan. When they changed that, that knocked everything off, started over, what they needed to add this back in. Because he said, I was having trouble getting hold of all their people with just self-service.
And then just, then it started happening?
Real well, no, no, no. But he said, we just bought it long enough that we changed the plan.
Because of that.
Yeah, because of that, and he said, it didn't even dawn on anybody that, whoops, we need to add that back in there and make sure it's on there anyway. Long story short.
But they're doing it, they're addressing it.
He's a vessel. Shouldn't pick one. I think that he's figured out that's what happened, that was part of the problem, but it shouldn't pick one, one call to whoever services through, right? Anyway, I think we're gonna really... Section 33, 34, okay, so I need to go back this way, see, his deal's not showing a road either. But how do these roads that work, you don't know where they're? Maybe they go on through, I don't know, there's, this, this is Highway 187 right here. That's a half mile. Well, it's gotta be a mile or two. It is coming, that goes on down, which it don't show it on there, but yeah, that takes you out by Illinois. No, this is 187, it's a trail, it's not right over here, I don't think it's a mile on the side of town. I don't think that's really, because all over for others, the, there's writings, that was, whatever, vacated. And see, there's 60 feet coming this way and 50 foot. 50 foot crossing there. What do you think, I should probably just tell him, you probably need to get with his board? And get the Illinois's?
Have any questions, call Brad. The legality of it, what I would say, wouldn't you, Gary?
Yeah. I mean, it's... Whatever they want, and then...
I was gonna have to open a road up there. I mean, I, it just, it didn't get recorded if it ever got open, that's the problem. I mean, that's not the first one, which is amazing, you know, just a little bit, because this is not the first.
I guess, well, I guess some townships are okay with it, just being 40 feet.
That's her? Oh, yeah. He thinks at least, I mean, most of them guys aren't comfortable, I mean, in today's world, 40 foot, just...
Yeah, you might as well, I mean, now's the time to do that.
How do we know that you're gonna say it's not a duty?
I would say they need to come talk to you, because...
Yeah.
Not like they haven't put it on, and then, I'm guessing that we have... Think last time we just did a resolution that opened it, and we had to wait and see, and we had to have a public care act, I can't remember, you better ask Brad about the realities.
The oxygen has to be involved at some point in time. Betty too, I suppose.
Well, I would say there's a lot more roads than them two in question.
Could be.
Probably.
In Neimaw County. And that's just too bad, but something that's been overlooked by...
And it's, yeah, it's probably got just mishandled, maybe, I mean, I don't know.
Well, about the only way you could do it is just go take one route and go all the way across the county, take another route and go all the way across the county.
Well, that's about everything, Mary Kay? I think we can go ahead and close out at 135.
Okay.
Can you? Okay. We don't have anything else, do we?
Not to my knowledge.
I think we're... It's everything I got on my list.